Good morning, members, President of the Chamber and members of the Executive. Also, good morning to people that are zooming in. First, I'm going to call on the Covid statement to be read out, please.
Kehirakam, members. The National Standard Operating Guidance for attendance at council meetings provides that all in attendance be formed at the start of the meeting if the Covid-19 control measures in place. I would like to draw your attention to a few issues. Each person attending this meeting in person should have completed a Covid declaration form before entering this room. These forms will also serve as a record of attendance for contact tracing purposes if required. This meeting room has been prepared in accordance with the Standard Operating Guidance. Face coverings must be worn by all attendees when entering and leaving the room. There should be no congregating in the building before or after the meeting. A one-way system is in place for entering and exiting the room, and the exit will be via the side door. In compliance with the recommendations of the Standard Operating Guidelines, the meeting time will not exceed one hour and 55 minutes. Attendees must adhere at all times to the two-meter physical distancing and follow the public health advice in relation to hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette. A response plan is in place in the event that an attendee at the meeting feels unwell or is displaying possible Covid-19 symptoms. An isolation room has been provided. If anyone feels unwell during the meeting, you should alert myself or Kevin, and you will be escorted to the isolation room. Thank you, Kehirak.
Thank you, Mr. Calfether. At the outset of the meeting, on behalf of the elected members and staff, I'd like to propose a vote of sympathy to the family of the late Brendan Carrollan, former senior planner who passed away recently. A number of members will recall Brendan. He worked with Sligo County Council from 1995 to 2007, and he was an excellent public servant, who has extensive experience in his profession. His great friend, former councillor Joe Leonard, recalled him as a warm-hearted, kind person, whose exemptional command of language was the expression of an outstanding intellect: deep learning, perfect recall, humility, and infectious sense of humour. It is a memory of Brendan cherished by all who knew him and admired him. On my own behalf, on behalf of all the members and staff, we wish to convey our condolences to his fiancee, our colleague Neve Owens, and their daughter Emily. I think councillor Bree wants to second it.
Kehirak, I would certainly second that vote of sympathy. Brendan Carrollan, I think you've encapsulated there what the words of our former colleague councillor Leonard, but Brendan was always efficient, capable, straight-talking, and affable. He was always concerned with the common good, and it has to be said that he was extremely fair in his dealings with those of us who were elected representatives, but even more so with the general public. He was highly respected. Thank you, Kehirak.
Thank you. Councillor Maloney?
I just want to add my voice to the vote of sympathy to Brendan Carrollan's partner and the family. He was head planner in my first two terms here, and I always found him an absolute gentleman to deal with, somebody that had a great sense of an overall view of how planning should be in the county, and always gave you a very good reason why such things was happening. I think he was someone that was easy to deal with, courteous, and had the common good in all his force. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gilroy?
Again, I'd like to be associated with it. I visited Brendan at his house a few times. I suppose the last time was canvassing in 2019, and it was the best house you could finish at because he was having a barbecue out the back and took out two glasses of wine, and it was a lovely way to finish off an evening, where he offered to help me come for advice when we're doing the next development plan. "I'll guide you the right way," he said, but unfortunately, we've lost that. He was a very entertaining host, highly intelligent. I'd like to pay tribute to the way the acting chief executive paid tribute at his funeral on behalf of the council. And I suppose I visited his apartment. I did a job in an apartment he had in Calounie, and there was only one piece of art remaining in the apartment. And for those of you old enough, it was "The Naked Truth," a famous election poster by Joe Leonard. Not everybody would like a naked sketch of Joe up on their wall, but Brendan had the humour to enjoy it, so may he rest in peace. And my condolences to Neve.
Thank you. Councillor Fox?
I'd offer my condolences to the Carrollan family as well. I knew Brendan well myself. He helped me out a lot indeed, and her family. And he was always a true, straight-talking, sort of a man, forward-thinking, and very positive about the development of County Sligo in general. And may he rest in peace.
Thank you, members. Councillor Gibbons?
I'd like to be associated with all the votes of sympathy in relation to Brendan, these men that I would have had a cross pass with in the past in relation to what I was going through for advice on a number of occasions. And I'm sure my former colleagues as well, both Sean and Chris McManus, who have worked along with Brendan very close in the past, would also want to be associated with. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Councillor O'Grady?
Thank you, Kehirak. I too would like to be associated with the votes of sympathy on the passing of Brendan. And indeed, Brendan was one of nature's gentlemen, but he had a huge awareness of the needs of the ordinary person and always never moved away from that. And I think that was his huge strength, that in his position, he still considered the human and the everyday aspects of people's lives. And I too would like to compliment Mr. Calfether on his contribution on behalf of Sligo County Council at the mass, and indeed, our former colleague Joe Leonard, who took part also. So again, may the Lord rest him.
Thank you. Okay, members. Oh, sorry, councillor Bree.
I'd like to propose that the council would extend its sympathy to the wife and family of the late Maurice Prisje of Crozan, Brittany, who passed away last month after a short illness. A councillor on the municipal council in Crozan in 1980, he was a founder member of the Crozan-Sligo Town Twinning Committee along with Jezze Lebordia and the then mayor of Crozan, Claude Givney. In the intervening period, Maurice Prisje and his colleagues played a leading role in the work of that committee, building on the strong friendships between our two communities. In those 40 years, strong friendships have flourished between our two communities and between individuals, families, and groups in our linked groups, in our linked towns. Mutual visits by musicians, students, artists, dancers, choirs, athletes, and special needs groups have taken place year after year and continue to broaden the understanding of the cultural, recreational, and sporting activities of both communities. Maurice Prisje and his wife Janine had a special affinity with Sligo and with Ireland, and the generosity, kindness, hospitality and warmth they extended to those from Sligo who visited Crozan more gate over the years will always be remembered. Maurice was particularly looking forward to the fortieth anniversary celebration of her town twinning, but unfortunately, world events led to that celebration being postponed. And I propose that we extend our sympathy to his wife Janine, his daughters Morgan and Nalwen, and to his extended family, and more so to his colleagues in the Crozan-Sligo Town Twinning Committee. It formally moves that motion, Kehirak.
Thank you, councillor Bree. Councillor O'Grady?
Thank you, Kehirak. I would like to second that proposal and to acknowledge, as councillor Bree has more than adequately acknowledged, the input that he made to town twinning and the friendships that were formed over many years with them. So I would like to again extend my sincere sympathy to them.
Thank you. Councillor Walsh?
Yeah, I too want to echo my sympathies and the sympathies on behalf of our own group, and I think councillor Bree has covered it very well, and we share those sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you. I think on behalf of all the members, we certainly concord with councillor Bree's sentiments and pass on our sympathies. Now, members, moving on to the main agenda, I'm going to endeavour to get through the whole thing today, so I'm going to ask people to be brief, if they can, please. I'm going to try and, you know, we have a municipal meeting next week, so I'm going to ask for, again, for your cooperation, whatever points, keep them short, please, and we will get through it. Motion number one, to note the minutes of Sligo County Council. Noted. Number two, oh yeah, second, councillor Boyne. Number two, Sligo County Council Audit Committee held on 16th December. Councillor Maloney, second. Councillor Walsh. Item number three, to note minutes. Councillor O'Grady. Councillor Gibbons. Number four, councillor Walsh. Second, councillor Fox. Thank you. Motion number five.
Second.
Who? Sorry, councillor Walsh and Maloney, thank you. Motion number six, adjourn me councillor Gilroy, and second councillor Gibbons. Thank you. Motion number seven, update on the reactivation of the Public Arts Programme for Sligo and note that the membership of the Public Arts Steering Committee report attached.
Proposed.
Noted, councillor Bree. And second councillor Gilroy, thank you. Item number eight, to consider and approve the Municipal District of Ballymore, the Municipal District of Sligo Borough, and the Municipal District Sligadrum Cliff, that the schedule works for 2021 for road.
Proposed.
Councillor Maloney, second, by councillor Gibbons. Thank you. Number nine, to note the annual financial statement 2020 attached.
On page 25 of the statement, under the heading "Contributions to Other Bodies," there's an increase in expenditure of 102,000 euro. Last year, the expenditure was 665,000 euro, and this year it's 767,000 euro. I'm anxious to know what other bodies, in inverted commas, are receiving such an increase. Also, under administration expenses, there's an increase of over 200,000 euro. What was that increase used for? And finally, I note that expenditure under miscellaneous expenses has doubled, and I'm just anxious to know what that additional funding has been used for. And in fairness, now, I don't expect the finance officer to know that off the top of her head, but possibly she might get back to us between now and her next meeting.
Yeah, that's okay. We'll get someone to revert back to you, or Miss Fagan.
Yeah, we have it all analysed, and it's no problem. But like that, when it just comes across, when I'm in a different room as well, I'll come back, I'll send a memo out with the breakdown, but maybe just if councillor Bree can fill it out, maybe on a page, just the three categories again, to make sure that we get what he's looking for.
Thank you very much, and I'll pass on the queries to the meetings administrator.
Yeah, and I, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
There's explanations for them all. Some of them are tidy-ups and all the rest. Okay, thanks, Kehirak.
Thanks. And just at the outset, maybe, members, just if you can, when you're speaking, turn on your mic, because the people that are zooming in can't hear you. Okay, moving on, so to motion number 10, to authorize over expenditure of 20,105,400. Proposed councillor Walsh, second councillor O'Grady. Number 11, to propose councillor Fox.
Just one point on.
Sorry, one second. I propose councillor Fox, second councillor Maloney, thank you. Now councillor Walsh.
Yeah, thanks, Kehirak. Just on the CUV grants, I suppose I want to thank the section for them and the detail that's gone into them. I would ask that the director consider for the estimates next year to increase the budget stream to the residents association upkeep area and to the community event site. I think there's a large number of applications this year, a large number of increase in residents associations being set up, and while the money has been divvied out as much as possible, it's quite a small figure for a residence association. So I would ask that both them budget lines be considered, possibly doubled for next year. I think there's huge work done in the residence associations and the community involuntary groups across the county, and if someone else had to pick up the tab for this, it would cost a lot more, so just if we can note that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gilroy?
Yeah, again, I'd like to welcome it and agree with what councillor Walsh has said there, that, you know, even if the groups don't particularly get any more, there's going to be more groups applying in, there's going to be more residents associations. It's a victim of its own success, this game, and there are new tidy towns groups that are being set up as well. So I think we have to kind of be prepared that there is going to be more demand as we go forward, so I'd support what councillor Walsh has proposed.
Thank you. That's agreed, members. Motion number 12, proposed councillor Bree, councillor O'Grady, thank you. Number 13, noted, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to deferred motions. First motion, number 14, councillor Bree. Deferred, thank you. Motion number 15, councillor Maloney.
Remove.
Okay, remove. Thank you, councillor Maloney. Well, members, on to motion number 16, and this is my own motion now. I know we have some other motions in from other councillors, so we can take all together in the interest of progressing the meeting on. I suppose I brought this forward, I'm not going to read out the motion. This was in light of the announcement, I think on the 1st of March, when we had our council meeting, the announcement by Bank of Ireland that it was to close a third of its bank branches, 88, in this jurisdiction. And I note that I have sent a letter to CEO Francesca McDonagh on behalf of myself and the residents and the people that have contacted me, because I firmly believe this is a retrograde step. You know, the customers going back two and three and four generations have been dealing with the branches. I think that, and having listened to the ERCTIS committee, where members of Bank of Ireland were present, I know Francesca McDonagh stances vehemently that they will not reassess the closures, and I think this is very bad for the communities in Ballymore and South Sligo in particular, and Tobacurri, because I think to say that everyone is moving digitally, and this was a move that was brought forward by the way people were acting. I firmly believe that the banks, you know, they instigated people to go forward, because we're all well aware, over the last few years, the banks have actively sought to limit customers coming into the branches. We have all seen where there were four and six tellers at a counter, and it was reduced down to maybe one. And then businesses certainly that were, I know, going in looking for business services, looking for change or whatever, they were being told to go to other branches, that this was not available. So I certainly don't believe that it was customers that sought this change by Bank of Ireland. And I think then that we have an issue with broadband in all our communities, which all the members are well aware of. And I think that, you know, to say that, oh, everything will be fine, it's going to post offices, I think we all well aware that post offices, the pressure they're under, and while some of them have moved into retail premises, it's some peak times have long, lengthy queues. So I think if we're going to be looking at a scenario where extra queues and extra people would be brought forward in, I certainly believe that, I don't want to see a repeat of what happened in 2017 when the Ulster Bank closed in Ballymore, we need our ATM machines. People, while a certain amount of people have gone digital, there are an awful lot of people who still want to be able to access cash. And I think to state that, oh, the ATMs will be in supermarkets or wherever post offices are located, these ATMs, when the shops close, will be inaccessible. And the technology is there now, that ATMs need to be kept in the communities for people that they can access their cash. So that's, as I say, I could say an awful lot more on it. My firm belief on this is this move is down to one word and one word on have served the bank. The bank were bailed out, while we know they have paid back the money that was maybe given to them during the bailout. An awful lot of people over the years have suffered, and I think it's a retrograde step. So I'm going to call on councillor Gibbons, as indicated, first to come in, and then, sorry, councillor Maloney and councillor Healy.
Could I just make a suggestion in relation to it? Thomas, do you want to take your motion with this?
Yes.
Yeah, well, if it isn't that, well, in that case, if I let Thomas talk first, and I could come in after that, because I seconded Thomas's motion. I think it's only fair, because he's the
Yeah, I take the motion as my first, my one, and then councillor Healy and Gibbons and councillor Maloney. Is that okay? Right. Now councillor Healy, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. First of all, listen, this is an important issue. It's an issue that yourself and myself often stood outside that bank, the Bank of Ireland, back in 2017, when they were closing some of the service units at the time, and we raised our concerns at that time regarding the future of the bank after the Ulster Bank had closed in Ballymore. It's important, and I'm encouraged here today by yourself as a government party, as well as councillor Maloney, how you've shown unity, and it's important. But there's only one thing I would be saying is, I think that we need to be sending a deputation to meet with the CEO of the Bank of Ireland, because we need to make sure that we hold that 24-hour service there. There's still 30% of people that use cash services. Ballymore is a mer town, it depends on people coming and going to it. The survival of a bank in a town is, there was a study carried out over in Oxford in England where a bank closed down, and it showed that after the bank closed down, 64% of loans were cut to small SMEs because they were using their bank on a regular basis. And that's what's happening in Ballymore. The businesses in Ballymore can go in and get small loans off the bank because they're working with them every day. Now, I think that we need to stand here, and we need to be sending a clear message out to them. Enough is enough. They're not going to, they can't do what they're going to do. I seen it in 2012 in Calounie when the EIB closed, and the effects that it had on businesses, and the effects it had on the community and everything else. Ballymore and Tobacurri need to stand up, and we need to be asking questions, because we are the ones that bailed them out. We are the ones that are, at the end of the day, are a 14% shareholder in these banks. And it's important that we send a clear message. So I'm asking, Kehirak, I'm asking you to look for a meeting with the CEO of the Bank of Ireland, and let's not send letters to them. Let's meet them face to face like we did when the, with the EIB was closing in Calounie. We went up and met with them, and we made sure that we brought the fight to them, and I'm asking that that happens. And I'm asking that we put a delegation here today that will meet with them. And we ask the questions, the serious questions that need to be asked, because it's all right saying, look, well, when you go out of the town, leave the bank to us. What we want to be saying to them is, if you go out of our town, we want another bank in this town that'll be there for the people and represent the people, because that's what we need. Because, as you said yourself, there's 88 banks, there's 103 towns are going to be affected across this country by what the Bank of Ireland has done. Remember back in 2008, this whole country was affected by what the Bank of Ireland done and what the other banks did. And it was the likes of us, and the old generation and the young generation, and the vulnerable in this society, that bailed them out. Now it's time we stood up and told them enough is enough. You're here to represent us. The bank is here to serve us, not us to serve the bank. And I think that that's the message we need to be sending out to this chamber here today. Thank you.
Councillor Healy. Councillor Gibbons?
As the second of Thomas's motion, I'd have to support everything that Thomas says in relation to it, but the one thing that I find ironic in relation to all of this, only last week the government launched the initiative to try and regenerate the likes of the small towns and rural areas throughout the country. On the back of our banks closing down, the Bank of Ireland closing down, and all them small towns, our post offices closing down, like, they're the lifeline of them areas. And without them, you don't have, areas die without them. Now, we've seen it, and you mentioned it yourself, in relation to going into the banks. The banks are a business, and that's the way they're treating it. They're really treating themselves the same as the supermarkets. When you go to the self-service in the supermarkets, you're actually doing somebody a good job. That's the other aspect of it. And that's what's happening here. That's the way the bank is looking at it. And the government in this country should not settle for the closures of these banks. They have 24% of an investment in these banks. We seen Ulster Bank closing in the small areas, and now Ulster Bank is closing, is going out of Ireland altogether. You know what? It doesn't come anywhere near, it's not the same agenda, because Ulster Bank is an English consortium. What they were making profit was going out of the country. This is staying within the country, and the government needs to put their boot in, to stick it in, and make sure, make everything as difficult as possible. As councillor Healy said there, if it is a thing that the Bank of Ireland wants to pull out, let the government get behind and encourage another bank in there, and start to push the shareholder, take the shareholder and put it into the other bank, give it as much encouragement as possible. But I think myself, what has been done, because the lifeline of the banks in this country was from the likes of the rural areas. It wasn't that long ago when this town was an ordinary agricultural town. It was not always a hub of industry or whatever else. I'm not saying it's anywhere massive even near that, but it still recognises as the hub of the North West because of the jobs that's there between the Scottish Industrial Estate and all across, all across this whole area. But it was the ordinary little farms and the ordinary little shopkeepers in them areas that kept them banks, that kept that bank and built it. Now, I think myself, and I am serious in relation to this, we have a government there at the moment, and it's made up between, there's four lots in it, reality to what, it's nearly gospel truth, if they just come together instead of acting like a mongrel and going at every different angle, that they come together and operate as one, and get behind the people, and talking about the people. I want to commend the ordinary 58 on Street in Ballymore and Tobacurri that tried everything in their power, just tried and highlighted all of this, including a lot of my own party members, activists on the ground, my own party, and I know myself, the Pairs Party was one of the people that highlighted this, the closure of the banks in the beginning. But it is something that needs to be that way, and the government needs to have the brass to get in there and just lay down the law and say, this is what's happening if you pull out. We will make it very attractive to an outside banking agency that wants to come in, but it will come off your back. And that's exactly what's needed to be done.
Thank you. Councillor Maloney?
Kehirak, I just want to agree with everything you have said and the two previous speakers. I think that the actions of the Bank of Ireland is nothing short of deplorable. I also believe that the decision, as you have said yourself, to close the bank is something that's irreversible, but I don't think it's too much to ask that the ATM will remain in, particularly Ballymore, Tobacurri continues to have a bank, but depending in a town like Ballymore on an ATM that's in a food store, I don't think it's acceptable. And I have been lobbied by people that's running pubs and chippers there in Ballymore, and they feel that it will impede on their business if there isn't an on-street ATM. Thanks, Kehirak.
Thanks. Okay, I think there's full agreement on that, members. Well, yeah, yeah, the ninth safe is vital. Like, I have no problem that if we can send a letter to the CEO Francesca McDonagh requesting a meeting, but just from my own aspect, I have written to her, and I still have yet to get her reply, so.
What does that say?
Yeah, I know, like, it is, it's very disappointing. No, I'm going to try and move on if I can, a quick one, yeah, because
Is there any possibility that we have a delegation from here?
Well, I think if we send off a letter first to question, and then we'll come back to the issue of a delegation, if they agree to meet, okay, is that agreed? Okay, members, thanks for that. Motion number 17, councillor Cassidy. Second by councillor Walsh. Councillor Cassidy?
Yeah. Thank you. I'd like to welcome the report. It was just, the reply was very brief, but it says, if funding is available for providing new benches, the chosen design should be disability or disabled friendly. I very much welcome that. And I know that funding has been made available for public ground spaces, which I welcome and congratulate everybody who's involved in that, money for outdoor spaces and for active travel. So I'm with the changes in, I suppose, with Covid restrictions and the changes in society, that there are going to be an awful lot more outdoor facilities available, and they're going to be more disabled-friendly and family-friendly as well. So I do welcome that, and I look forward to seeing those. And I'd say sooner rather than later, and also people, so I've been asked a lot about those, but also families with young children who have buggies, that it's not just supposed for disabled people, but for people who have buggies, that they can just slot their buggy into a bench as well, so that they're not out on the street or out on the footpath. So I do, I welcome that, and I do look forward to seeing more of these types of disabled-friendly benches around County Sligo, not just town, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Walsh.
Yeah, and just to add briefly, councillor Cassidy has covered it, but I suppose there is a lot of funding for recreational areas being made available, will be made available through the new Town and Village Renewal Scheme that's going to open, and currently through Clor. So I think whatever facility is going forward from the county, that they all be wheelchair-accessible in terms of the gardens, like recreational areas. I know the motion down on these disabled benches back in 2019, so
I know the motion down on these disabled benches back in 2019, so if we are creating public spaces in areas, that these will be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a point of interest in relation to the benches, and I 100% support it, but the only thing that I would see in relation to any obstacle coming in the way of this is where you have people, able-bodied people, using these benches or whatever. Would it not make more sense that we'd look at all the benches that's in place and make them all disabled friendly? And that's what I would be asking in relation to it. And that is what's needed out there. It's inclusion that's wanted in parks, not a segregation, that there's certain benches for certain people and different benches for others. And I know it's a need. I would look, I think it's more appropriate and friendly, that we would look at all the benches and see what way they can be altered or replaced, and that they're all put in as wheelchair-friendly benches. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that motion is agreed. Councillor McSharry is delayed at the moment, so...
I'm seconding that motion.
I am. Well, councillor McSharry is delayed, so I'm going to have to come back to them. I'm moving on to motion number 21. Councillor Cassidy?
Thank you. The motion, the motion is that this council write to the Minister for Finance, following his recent remarks stating that taxes will rise after COVID. And ask not to increase taxes, but instead borrow money to stimulate the economy over the next decade. History shows that we cannot tax away after recession. The ECB is prepared to lend billions to allow this country back on track. An infrastructure plan, including a massive housing program, should be included in a decade. Tax will incrementally, will increase incrementally due to job creation, therefore strengthening the economy and increasing our ability to repay the ECB. Now, I have not more to say, but I just ask that this motion be shared with all other local authorities, please. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Healy. Your microphone, sorry.
Just on second of the motion, I want to assure councillor Cassidy that as opposition party, we will assure that we will hold the government parties to account in the draw, ensuring that they live up to their commitments to the Irish people.
Thank you. Councillor Boy.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to have my name taken away from any support from this. We can clearly see that there's a wealth tax needed rather than a tax being put on the people. You can see the workers who have declared the PUP payments have to pay taxes back on that when that went against complete legislation. We have 14 billion lying in a bank account, which we paid hundreds of millions to try and not take. We have multinational corporations that pay their corporation tax. So if we do not introduce a salary tax on commercial properties or estate duty, increase cattle gains tax, and we have to start closing the loopholes, I want nothing to do with a motion, would you be borrowing money from the ECB? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Boy.
I, like councillor Boyle, I will not be supporting this particular motion. While I accept the fact that we should not be imposing increased taxes on working-class people, I certainly believe we should be increasing corporation taxes and introducing a real wealth tax that will ensure that those who have resources and those who have extreme amounts of wealth, that they pay their fair share of taxes. So I don't think these people should be let off the hook.
Thank you, councillor Walsh.
Cahir, look, just on councillor's breeze point, I would hope that there's never an increase in corporation tax across this country, because we will see the loss of thousands of jobs. So I hope that that won't be form a part of this motion as passed.
Thank you, the motion, so we'll move on. Motion number 22. Well, no, they don't want to be associated with it, we have two dissenting, yeah, we have three members dissenting, so... Thank you. Motion number 22, councillor Cassidy again. Can I get a second? Can I get a second, please? Councillor Fox?
I'm proposing a side county council right to unpunish, asking to intervene on the crisis facing our community sector in relation to insurance. The community sector is facing so many challenges in reopening vital programs and services, and may not be in a position to recover from the impact of COVID-19 unless the cost of insurance is sorted. I know this is an issue for so many communities across the county and the country. A review of the judicial guidelines has taken place recently. These guidelines control the amount of damages awarded for personal injury claim and cost in insurance. These guidelines only brought damages from minor fully recovered injuries, down by 52% in Ireland, which means we are still an outlier in Europe. The 80% reduction is required to bring us in line with England and Wales and get insurance costs down to affordable levels, especially for the community sector. And I also ask for this motion to be shared with other local authorities. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fox.
Just to support the motion, it's a big issue throughout all communities, especially out in Sligo and Sligo area. Many of the community organizations are having big trouble trying to get insurance, but it's important, I support it.
Thank you, councillor Gibbons.
Just to make people aware, this is an issue that I do know the PAIRSTARTY has been fighting for over the last number of years, as opposed to since he was first elected, and he has highlighted. And it's great to hear that there's a change coming within the policies. It was on the news this morning, I was listening to one on OJFM, about in relation to claims going into the courts. Now, I do feel a lot of the cases in relation, the insurance companies themselves is a rip-off, everybody knows that. But in relation to the excuses that were used the whole way along, the ways was the false claims that was going in, things like that that was heading in or going in in front of the judicial system. But the judicial system was actually taking a lot of these cases and going along with whatever recommendations nearly was of the solicitor, instead of standing over and making a common sense decision. But we've seen it in relation to, I seen it on the local authority at one stage, and I know councillor Grady was a witness to this, what actually was, we were told a story at one of the meetings of the council, and it was by one of the senior executives at the time, and it was in relation to somebody putting a claim against Sligo Borough Council. And it was for the fellow on the footpath. But they had a same claim in against what was Quinsworth at the time. And when the council solicitor turned around to the judge and says, this person already has a claim in against Quinsworth for the same thing, and had the evidence and all there, but, and the judge turned around and says, we're dealing with this one now, and we'll deal with that when it comes in front of us. But that was no answer for a judge to give. And I feel the judicial system, it's not just the insurance system, it's the judicial system that needs to be very well shuck up and bloody well sorted out in relation to this, they need to be taking a fair stance on it. And you know something, a person, if they can't get insurance, if a person is out there and even for property, the flood of damage or anything else, if they can't get insurance, they should be able to take legal action against the insurance companies. Because if the insurance companies accepted their money at some stage, they should be made, they should be made accept their money the whole time, and they should have that covered the whole time. Shouldn't be awesome the carrot is stacked against you, that you're not able to get insurance that was already there, things like that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Martin Baker.
Thing is going on at every meeting. Can we move on? I have no problem with freedom of speech, but we all could be jumping in on things all day, so let's move on and get through our business, because it's precious time and it's work. Okay, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mer, councillor Boy. Motion number 23, councillor Clark, have a second or... Okay.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
Okay.
He is.
Yes. Come on ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I want to move motion 42, with your permission, at this juncture, in relation to, in relation to zoning in Iskey. Joint motion, if we have a councillor queening.
Okay, to remove that of the law, yeah.
No, to move it.
Oh, take a whiff, it's sorry, yes, okay, right, yeah.
Could we have the reports for both motions?
Yeah, have you received the report?
Who's responding to a star, is it?
Yes, yeah. The reports would have already been submitted, am I right? The responses would have already issued last Friday, I think, to councillors. The one on the report to item 23 is, well, it's a page and a half, so I mean, if you want me to go through it, that's no problem. The item, the report to item 42 is quite short, so I can... Cahir, look, it's up to yourself, but councillor Clark, what do you got, a copy of the report? What you were able to...
Yeah, we've got copies, yeah, they're nine of them, two more. Cahir, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, go ahead, councillor.
On motion 42, we got to a Brian, and we take on board what the director said, there is no planning application yet before the council. Let me tell you that briefly, Miss Clark was bullied, was purchased as an IDF factory back in 1979, and there was 40 jobs employing this factory in the 80s. But in recent times, it was closed, community had used to it, and then four years ago, Mr Hammond bought this site. And last year, the LCDC, which myself, I knew, and Cahir, and the county manager are part of, we granted 12,000 for disability study for a camping site on this site. And when the people who were applying for the planning discovered that that site was zoned industrial, and Harrow had a problem, because this is a tourism project. Now, it's a very, very tenuous in the two, and it's frustrating. So what we're seeing, we're asking the council to look at this favorably when it comes in on the north Harrow planning application. And we're going to defer the motion until the planning application is going to come in now, and you'll see, and we'll be encouraging the county manager and the planners to grant this. This is a win-win for the community, it's a tourism project, it creates jobs, and the community in full are fully behind us. But again, it's what's in the full planning process. We're going to defer 42 until that plan is in.
Just on motion 42, you know, what we're appealing for is some flexibility in the planning department. And also, in the words of our former CEO, Cahir Hayes, a little bit of common sense. Not common, he used to say, very regular. And in this instance, it's common sense. This land is lying vacant for 50 years, and this is a use that will bring business and industry to pet breakfast and tourism product. And it shouldn't be held up for two years until the development time is amended to facilitate the zoning laws. So I think all members would support this application. In relation to the motion 23, the county development plan, I'm greatly concerned that our existing county development plan has not taken into account our culture of our rural communities. The narrative must change from the need to live in rural areas to rural areas need people to live in it. That must become the narrative. 80% of people born in rural Ireland between the ages of 25 and 50 no longer live in rural Ireland. 98% of people born in rural Ireland, a rural Sligo, will never qualify to, on the current guidelines, to achieve planning mission in rural Ireland. And the 2040 plan is embedded, it has embedded this in the planning guidelines, and the Rural Independent Group have put down amendments to the 2040 plan, which will facilitate for development in rural Ireland in the dawn, an amendment to the 2040 plan, and I'm asking all councillors of all parties and none to that with their duties to support the commitment which will be coming before the dawn in the coming weeks.
Cahir.
Yes, councillor Taylor.
And look, just, could I remind, well, in support of both motions, and just on the most, motion of the project in Iskey, I believe there has been a good business plan to go forward. And there are, there's business people, there's people that are very interested in progressing the project and moving it forward, not only for Iskey, but for West Sligo and County Sligo. And, you know, I think it would be good for our tourism economy, and I definitely think we should look at whatever way we can to support it. On the development plan, I would just have, I suppose, a few questions, because I do believe that councillors, you know, we need to be proactive in the development process and in helping the planners and trying to work together with the planners. And I would suggest that the planning committee, that we have, the councillors would meet with the planners, maybe at an organized meeting, maybe a special meeting, that both would be able to attend. I know this is probably done in other local authorities as well, and that the officials could engage with the councillors on discussions, and that we would understand, the planners would understand what we would like to see in the development plan as well. And I think this would be beneficial, and it would improve communication between us all as well. And I would also propose that we, we maybe try to meet the planning regulator as well, or that we could request a meeting, councillors could request a meeting with the planning regulator, and that would be helpful in outlining what council members' powers and the duties are, which is part of our role in the development plan. And in the email that we got on the 30th of March, it stated that future zoning decisions must be based on housing demand instead of population targets. And I certainly would have concerns as to how housing demand will be calculated, and I would pose the question, like, how do we propose to calculate this, or how do the planners propose that this will be done? Because I think this is a very dangerous statement to be making for our rural communities and for our culture, as councillor Clark has mentioned. So I would propose that we, you know, that we would do that, that we would meet with councillors and the planning executive, the planning executive, and that we would also suggest that we could have a meeting with the planning regulator to outline our function as councillors, and maybe help us understand this a bit more.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Councillor Tayley?
Yeah, I just want to support motion number 42. And there's a clear indication here when this man bought the land, that the IDA, they didn't see a future in putting a factory out there. So, I mean, we see a future now, and what this man is trying to breathe forward is Lampen, which will be a great, great for the community out there, great tourist attraction, and it's on a wild Atlantic way. He's put a lot of money and a lot of time into it, and it says, common sense must prevail in issues like this, when we have an opportunity to invest and see investment going into a community. And I mean, not only re-employment as well as everything else, so I think we should look at these things here. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Boy.
Thank you, Chair, I'd just be supporting motion 42.
Thank you. Councillor Sinead McGuire?
Thank you, Cahir. Just in relation to number 42, it's a very positive project, and it's to be commended, and it has been outlined, the fact that it's industrial is probably no longer possible. And so we really need to look at this in reality, and what's been proposed is something that is needed and would bring people into the area and encourage tourism. However, I'm very cognizant of the fact of the importance of the independence of the planning process, and that we as an authority make sure not to be seen to interfere with that, but would like to express my support of it. In relation to councillor Taylor's motion, I would definitely support the meeting with the planning regulator, and support his other suggestions. Planning is an incredibly complex area for us as councillors to try and tackle, and if we're to make a meaningful contribution towards these plans, I think we should be as informed as possible. So if we could be assisted in organizing those meetings, it would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gilroy.
Again, I'd like to support the motion, and I think, you know, we need to look at all these things, because the world has changed so much, and not only Glamping, but we also have the issue of camper vans and all that. We have new bylaws that will be coming in front of us probably next month or the month after. And we really need to be thinking outside the box and with the planners to see what can we do. I think everyone in this room wants to, wants to find a way of facilitating visitors that come either to clamping villages or to camper vans, but it has to be done in an organized way, and it must be done within the planning rules. But I'm sure the planners can work with us to find a way and a solution to these problems. Thank you.
Councillor Cassidy?
I'd just like to be associated with both of those motions and to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Walsh.
Yeah, I'd be very brief. I too met with this developer. This is a shovel-ready project, and we have a shovel-ready project that's invested money in our county, and that's going to employ people in rural areas. We should be doing everything we can to adjust whatever we have to adjust to allow developments such as this. It shows up our county development plan for being out of touch, out of date, and it's certainly something we're going to have to look at, at any further county development plan. We have to have measures that in our response to our current tourism strategy and our wider... We have to have measures that in our response to our current tourism strategy and our wider county plans. And our current, current county development plan isn't in touch with the reality on the ground at the minute. So hopefully we can address that in the review that's forthcoming.
Thank you councillor Taylor.
I, I know councillor Clark wants to come in again as well, just, just before councillor Clark comes in, this, this development plan, Cahill, it's, it's important to councillors. And I think we've had a number of meetings, as you know yourself, if you've attended a number of meetings. It's, and I know it's important to, to our, our planners and, and our executives and Sligo County Council as well, but we believe that councillors' views should be taken on board and I believe they will. And we have seen this throughout the country, that these development plans have become very important. And it's, it's about our communities, it's about our homes, it's about where we live, and it's about the future of this county. And that's why it's so important to councillors. And this is not a battle with the planning authority and the planning department and us as councillors. We are looking for a way to work together to be able to hear our views and have our views heard, as well as listening to the views of our, our, our planning department as well. But it's important, Cahill, and it's important for our county for the next five to ten years, for where we live and our communities and how we're going to grow. And that's what this is all about.
Thank you councillor Clark.
Yeah, Cahill, I, I just thought that the chair would come in and indicate whether we would be granted a special meeting for, on the planning, the county development plan prior to the launch of, of the review, just to get a briefing of outlines of how to enforce the procedures. I know we're confined to an hour and a half or an hour and fifty five minutes. So a special meeting is required. And would you have any dates in mind as the, as the launch of the, of the development plan is imminent?
Thank you councillor. Miss Clark.
Yeah, thanks Cahill. Well, can I just say in relation to item number forty two, we are aware that there is a private individual in Iskey who, who wants to provide damping and accommodation. And certainly that is to be welcomed. So the procedure has been outlined in the report as to what needs to happen if the change in zoning is to take place, because it will require a material contravention of the current county development plan. So we do await that planning application and certainly a use for those lands, particularly that will support, I suppose, the tourism sector in Iskey is to be welcomed. So we await that, that the planning application. So in relation to item number forty two, certainly we have no problem in meeting with the councillors. And we have indicated to the rural councillors in particular and to councillor Taylor, have had a couple of conversations with them, that we will facilitate any meeting with them, help clarify the situations in relation to the planning process and so forth, as it applies particularly to rural areas. And certainly councillor Clark, if a meeting with councillors is of use and of benefit, particularly in relation before the, the first document is, is circulated, we certainly will facilitate that. So we can come back to you with dates and we certainly will until today in our calendar because, as you're aware, we are proposing to bring forward the, the review process or the commencement of the review process. So in our time scales, what we will do is make sure that a meeting with yourselves, whether it's with councillor Taylor's group, councillors, or whether it's with all councillors, you know, that's up to yourself. We certainly will facilitate that.
Cahill.
Yes.
Cahill, if, if, if it's agreed, I might engage with miss Clark on, on a, maybe a date and a time for that meeting if it's agreed with, with the members.
Yeah, that's agreed.
All members.
All, that's agreed and we'll get a meeting. Yeah.
For us to attend is.
Yeah, well, you can come back to us on that. Thanks councillor Taylor. Yeah, and thanks all the members. And look, I want to support anyone that has an initiative to put in more holiday resorts or Glamping or whatever in, in any part of the county. I think it's very welcome and we have to support the more tourism we can get into our county. Okay, members.
That motion has been deferred, that party two has been deferred, right?
Yeah, yeah, just another point to note, yeah. So we're, we're agreeing with this and councillor Taylor will come back to us. Thanks members, moving on so to motion number twenty five, joint motion councillor Healy and councillor Gilroy. Defer it, right, defer it. Thank you. Motion number twenty six, councillor Gino Boyle and second by councillor Bree.
Thank you Chair. It's been nearly three years since a referendum decision and legislation was passed. Most I O G P is committed to providing abortion services care through my options dot A E and a few of any are providing such care privately to their own patients. A policy by the H S E, H S E have passively waited for local G Ps to step up to the plate has failed. This means women and girls and people in Sligo who have to travel to another county and emergency tele, telemedicine is not guaranteed after Covid measures cease. This county level gap in services represents a serious failure of provision which cannot continue any longer. It's simply failing women and many of them in difficult stressful situations for an entire county. Women and girls, pregnant people from Sligo who need services have to either travel from Bundoran, Donegal or Casselery in Roscommon to find a doctor who will treat them. For many women, especially in rural areas with no public transport and without a care or money, it's simply not, not possible to access services in this region. We've heard from doctors in these regions and they're under strain and we definitely think it's unfair to have to provide for County Sligo as well as their own patients. So I formally move the motion.
Cahill.
Thank you councillor Bree.
I wish to formally second the motion. The, the latest figures released by the Department of Health indicate that in two thousand and nineteen, the fifty nine women from Sligo who would unplanned pregnancies were obliged to travel outside the county for a termination. And despite the fact, as has already been pointed out, that it's almost three years since the Health Regulation of Termination of Pregnancy Act two thousand and eighteen became law and three years since the repeal referendum was passed, the H S E has not yet provided the service to women with unplanned pregnancies in Sligo. In the West Castlebar University Hospital in Mayo and University Hospital Galway provide the service. However, there has been no indication as when the, as when the H S E intends to provide the service in Sligo. The Minister for Health recently told the DALL that this is a service issue for the H S E to deal with. However, I believe it's also an issue for the Department of Health to deal with. Formally second the motion.
Thanks members, that's agreed. Move on so, motion number twenty seven. And I have an amendment on this motion from councillor Gino Boyle that reads, Sligo County Council calls on the government to provide free psychological support for all victims of domestic, sexual, gender-based violence, D S G P V after court cases. Seconder, councillor Bree.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Chair. And I'm looking for free psychological supports for all victims after the court case ends. When a victim goes to court, all expenses such as travel or accommodation is taken care of by the state. But once the case is finished, all support stops and victims are sometimes waiting up to maybe two years to get their own counselling services. And it's, it's, people in them situations are under serious pressure, anxiety, and it really gets to them. And we used to wait that long to provide, even to get a low cost service is shocking when you look at the perpetrators of access to a range of individual and group-based therapeutic services while they're in prison. TOS, the Child and Family Agency, is statutory responsibility for care and protection of victims of domestic, sexual and gender-based violence. TOS provides support, coordination and funding home to sixty organisations around the country, which includes sixteen rape crisis centres. And with the increase in demand for these services, funding to the sector has increased by approximately twenty five percent from just under four million in two thousand and sixteen to five million in two thousand and nineteen. Unfortunately, the funding is not enough and victims who deserve better care from this government. And along with some of the cases due to Covid nineteen restriction, rape cases and murder cases have been delayed as much as two years and this is devastating the victims. So formally move the motion.
Thank you councillor Bree.
Cahill, I think at, at the outset, I think it has to be said that Covid nineteen has not caused domestic and sexual violence and it has exposed it. The pandemic has revealed the inadequate and poorly resourced way in which the government has been responding to coercive control generally and domestic violence specifically. Safe Ireland, an agency working towards ending domestic violence, has called for a specific government minister who would have direct responsibility for domestic, sexual and gender-based violence. It and other advocacy groups have said that lack of resources and the separation of policy, planning and service provision across government departments and agencies is crippling attempts to tackle gender violence. Currently in Ireland, there is nobody, no person or office in charge of managing the sexual violence epidemic, let alone eliminated. In this context, many of the service providers for victims are deficient and inadequate. And if we hope to prevent domestic and sexual violence and provide care to the victims and survivors, to protect them as far as possible from further victimisation, we need to ensure appropriate services are in place. And the provision of a comprehensive and free psychological service for victims is one of the supports which is urgently required. And in saying that, Cahill, I think we must ask ourselves, why are there so many victims? What type of society tolerates the level of abuse and violence, particularly against women, that appears to be acceptable in Ireland today? And I believe there is now a, a need for a national conversation, particularly among men, in regard to domestic violence and sexual violence and the steps that must be taken to prevent it. I formally second the motion.
Thank you councillor Sinead Maguire.
Thank you. And I'd like to wholeheartedly agree with the comments by councillor Bree. I think he's outlined very eloquently the terrible crisis that is domestic gender-based violence and that we're, as he outlined, seeing possibly more clearly now in this current pandemic, but has, that has always been there. And so I'd wholeheartedly support this motion and just add one point, that the lack of this facility acts as an impediment to victims coming forward. It's an incredibly stressful and traumatic event and then it's compounded by the legal process. And I saw that firsthand when I worked in this area. And the fact that victims are expected to do that with little or no counselling and that that counselling is then withdrawn from them once the case ends, regardless of whether there's a conviction or not, it leaves already vulnerable victims incredibly exposed. And as I say, I believe it's an impediment and a real obstruction to them wanting to come forward and report in the first place. Thank you.
Councillor Gibbons.
Just to add to support the motion and I suppose reality to it, and we're talking here and in a perfect world, we could get all them things put into place, but when you have a situation there where you've got a meeting with domestic violence and we've seen it, and we've seen where domestic violence itself, I had a motion on there only quite recently in relation to it and the services that was, are dealing with domestic violence. And no, it was a recognised that domestic violence had increased by over a hundred percent during the stage of the Covid, within the number of months of the Covid pandemic. And to think that the government hadn't put adequate funding in that to support the services that was already in place, other services that's out there in relation to children's services, psychologists, which is in this, the psychology end of it and whatever else, the waiting lists for them go on forever. And until the government hold the torch and say, right, we will put the funding into this and see it through, that's when that is going to be dealt with. And the other aspect that we will, that needs to be looked at in relation to domestic violence, I actually think the laws in this country are way too soft in relation to domestic violence. There's no deterrent there. At the end of the day, I mean to say, if, if the police call to somebody's house and take somebody out of the house for twenty four hours and they go through the courts and everything else and they come back and there's a burner put on that person and they re-offend and re-offend and re-offend, that family is still very vulnerable and that person is out there giving the two fingers up to them. But we've all seen it in the past. And like the reality, I'm not blaming the guard of Chacona, but I am blaming the judicial system. It needs a total turnaround. But most importantly, what is needed in relation is, is an injection of funding and that needs to be put through.
Thank you. Okay, motion agreed, members are moving on. Just, just to inform you, we're now five past eleven, so I intend to get the full agenda finished. So I'd, I'd be keep saying thank you to try and keep you moving as quick as I can. Motion number, second by councillor Grady. Thank you.
Number twenty eight.
Yeah, motion twenty eight, sorry.
Thank you Cahill. And I think we have an opportunity here. Basketball Ireland have announced in the past few weeks that they're developing eight to ten centres of excellence nationally. Only two of those locations have been decided, University College Galway and County College in Northern Ireland. So I, I think as Sligo All Stars is one of the oldest basketball clubs in the country and it will be very significant for the club and for the region. The club has hosted international tournaments and sent teams to play in England, France, Spain and America. Participation in the basketball club is increasing year on year and the club are very close to its goal of playing in Super League, which is premiership basketball and Division One for ladies. These centres of excellence will provide expertise such as strength and conditioning, sports medicine, sports psychology, diet and nutrition, sports management and administration, coach development and training. They will also have media and meeting facilities. We have the showgrounds, we have G A Centre of Excellence at Skardon, we will have a national surf centre in Strand Hill, we have a national mountain bike centre in Colani, and I believe that this council should request that Sligo be considered for a centre of excellence for basketball. I think it would be very significant for the county at a point where we're soon to be making an application for university status at I T Sligo. So I, I would ask the council to send a very clear message to the CEO of Basketball Ireland, the Chairperson of the Federation of Irish Sport, the Minister for Tourism, Culture, Arts, Gaelic Sport and Media and the Minister of Stateful Responsibility and Sports, Jack Chambers, that Sligo be considered for one of these centres. We're very well located geographically in the North West, so I'm asking the council to support the motion.
Thank you councillor Grady.
I wholeheartedly support this motion and I think it's very timely that they have agreed that they're going to pick eight to ten and that there only has been two areas picked so far. And Sligo has a long tradition, as councillor Walsh has said, with Sligo All Stars playing on an international stage back over fifty years ago and have been involved in hosting international games and whatever. So I think it's be very important that Sligo County Council would contact the CEO and request that Sligo would be considered for, as a location for one of the proposed centres.
Thank you councillor Sinead Maguire.
Thank you Cahill. I too would like to wholeheartedly support this motion. As councillor Grady has said, it's a very timely motion and I think Sligo is a very fitting location for one of these centres, given the history of the All Stars and how successful they have been for the length of their establishment. And I think we as a county council should do all that we can to put our force behind that and trying to secure that for this part of the country.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Mary Catherley.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I'd just like to support the motion as well and I'd also like to acknowledge the volunteers that are involved over the years and sponsors as well in supporting the All Stars because they started off very little years ago and now they're well recognised throughout the country. So it's just important to recognise all those volunteers again who have worked with children throughout the years to make the club what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor, is there someone indicated?
Yes, Cahill, I'd like to also support the motion as councillor Walsh has said, you know, the G A have the Centre of Excellence and Sligo have their centres of excellence as well. I think that, you know, basketball has, has a big future in this county as well. And it's like All Stars and they certainly work well together with the G A and I've seen that in the past. So I'd like to support the motion and I think it's very timely as well.
Thank you members, that's agreed. Motion number twenty nine, councillor Walts, second by councillor Gilroy.
Yeah, thank you Cahill. And we all know this has been close to two thousand and ten. You know, we had a campaign back, back in the early twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen around this. It was unsuccessful and I'm wondering what stance the local authority is now taking on this. There wasn't any incidents in the thirty two years, they were open. I've got the report and it outlines quite a detailed planning process that it would have to go through to reopen in terms of wastewater treatment facility and the purchase of ground. So can we move on that in terms of the survey and begin in that process or what is the plan? Are we going to leave as is? And maybe the director might come back in.
Thank you councillor Gilroy. You second the motion?
Yeah, I, I support the motion. It'd be very important to get those toilets open out there with the, the amount of stand-up paddle boarding, the amount of kayaking, all these different sports that are now taking place out there. It's become more crucial than ever. I'm a bit concerned that councillor Walsh and myself had a joint motion some time ago about toilets in some of the other areas in our municipal district. And we asked to be, that it be confirmed by the end of March that, that we would have, that these facilities would be in place for the summer. We still haven't heard back on that, so it would be important that we would hear back on the Mull of Moor especially. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Maloney.
Yeah, just briefly to support the motion.
Thank you. councillor Thomas Healy.
I know that the reason that we're closed down the first thing was because of, there was the water, the quality of the water had an effect on it. But like that, if we're going to open up, we need a care checker there. But I think that we should be looking at is, before we look at doing up the toilet thing, we should look at doing the road down to it because there's a site of bad bins on that road, there's hedges going out all over the place and we're trying to attract buses in there. I remember back in, back in the early eighties, when an uncle of mine lives at the very pier of, he used to run a boat out to the islands and that, and also had a shop and the buses used to come down there. And as it says, we seen there last year where we, where people came and start using barbecues and left the barbecues after them and nearly caused a fire down there. So it's important, right, we need these facilities, but it's important that we have a care checker or somebody in there that's going to be responsible about the new series as well.
Thank you, councillor Casterley.
I'd just like to be associated with the motion and to support it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Just finally, the engineer has mentioned about a site suitability assessment. I would ask that we, that be considered to move on with, because the current situation down at the Lake Isle of Innisfree is that we have hundreds of people coming there every few weeks to visit the area and they're now asking people, residents, to use the toilet facilities in their, in their houses. So I presume we can't allow that to happen going forward and that we will have some plan to reopen this facility, even if we can make a start on the process.
Thank you. Okay, members, moving on, so to, that's agreed, moving on to motion number thirty, councillor Gilroy, I believe, have we seconded her?
Yeah, can I maybe ask just at the start that, I'd like to get the response read into the, into the minutes. There's a number of items in it that I'm not particularly happy with, if it's possible that it can be read in, but with the, with the outlet of time. But I, and I know that there's an amendment coming, which basically is the last paragraph of mine anyway, so I'll maybe, can we have the?
Yeah, can I have the amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Cahill, look. And like councillor Gilroy has said, we've, I've discussed the amendment with councillor Gilroy, councillor Fox earlier this morning, outside with a number of residents from the road. And the amendment states that this council meet as per current COVID guidelines with the delegation of residents affected for discussion and that this notice of motion be deferred until the May meeting. Second by councillor, it's a joint motion between councillor Gilroy, councillor Fox.
Calling for communication with the group, okay, thank you. Is that, you're happy enough with that as the seconder? Okay, that's grand.
Sorry, I do need to go through some of the points that are, that were made in the response that we got. This is an ordinary meeting of Sligo County Council. The eighteen elected members in this council sit around this table to consider decisions every month. No elected member of Sligo County Council has had any act or part in the decision to close this road. I have endeavoured over the last three weeks to find out who exactly ordered the closure of this road and under what powers that authority has vested in that person to order such a closure. It is because of this that I put the motion forward before you, the members. I ask you to support the amendment now and that we come back to it next month with a report. The first sentence of the reply refers to the road safety audit. I presume that refers to the CST report, which I'm not going to question their report in any way, that they're experts in their area. It says that, this was emailed to me last Friday evening, the first line of the title page actually gets the address wrong. Then the report is dated July 2020 and the feedback was signed off on the night sixteenth of November. An email from Miss Kincanon on the twenty-fifth of March stated that the road design team informed both myself and councillor Casterley of the intention to close this access to vehicles last autumn. I want to put it on the record that in a telephone conversation on October eighth last year, about another issue on the eastern side of the road, it was mentioned that the road might be closed. This decision was not signed off on until over a month later, not in autumn but in winter, and I received no further details. The report consists of twelve pages and at no point does the report mention closing off the L seven two one six west. This is only mentioned on the feedback form, which is completed by the designer, which is internal in the council. The audit feedback form has a section where the designer is to describe alternative measures, give reasons for not accepting the recommended measure. In this section, the decision to close the L seven two one six west junction is put forward by the designer, Mr Ford, as part of two recommendations from Sligo County Council to not accept the recommended measures in paragraph three three two and three three three. No reason for not accepting the auditor's recommended measures was given. The next section asks if the alternative measures or reasons are accepted by the auditors, yes or no. The auditors have not marked that they accept either the alternative recommendation or the reasons that hadn't been given. Therefore, the auditor has not accepted the findings or the, of the feedback. So for this reason, I totally reject the call out of as inaccurate and that answer needs to be, needs to be changed. The next sentence states that Sligo County Council's road design staff have called to residents of the area to explain the measure. And this is the real problem, there has been very poor, poor, poor communications. I contend that a one-page, undated letter was dropped off in the letterbox of some of the residents after dark on the evening of Friday, March the sixth. No member of staff ever pressed a doorbell and stood two metres back with the mask on and engaged with any of the householders or their families. Two of the road users did speak with two council staff who gave their names as Pat and Joe. The meeting was more in relation to how access could be made to agricultural land on the eastern side of the same road, with the loads of stone could be deposited at the gates. Some conversation did take place about the closing of the road, but the input from the council staff referred to the now discredited road safety audit. I acknowledge that following the complaints from residents, myself and my colleagues, an attempt was made to alleviate some of the concerns raised by additional measures to improve the sightlines at the southern exit. These measures include cutting back trees and bushes during the breeding season, I might add. These will of course grow back within a few short months. You also state that the council have acknowledged that better and earlier communication of the restrictions should have taken place and I accept that and that was in a statement that was issued to the papers, but unfortunately, again, poor communication, it was not sent to me or to other councillors. Today is, I believe, the first time I've seen such acknowledgement, well, sorry, I do not believe that it is reasonable or fair to close any road without following the Roads Act nineteen ninety-three. And the reasons that I've given, that because pedestrians, the reason I was given is that because pedestrians and cyclists can still cross the road and turn right at this junction, there is not, that is not covered by the Act. I clearly recall occasions where the Stephen Street car park was closed for a weekend to facilitate a music festival and although it was still open to cyclists and pedestrians and the right of way was not extinguished, it was advertised in local papers, the public could make submissions and the possible inconvenience could be dealt with through agreement and again, communication. Other councils have closed roads in a similar way and have followed these rules. Legal consultation has taken place on both sides, I believe, even though Sligo County Councils, I'm told, is only verbal, which I think is a bit careless because we got ourselves into trouble before over rights of way. The excuses given to myself and other councillors do not stack up as the road safety auditors did not recommend closing the road. If proper consultation were to take place, even at this late stage, which is what the new proposal proposes, I'm sure the good people of Ahagaidh Moneane are willing to engage and listen to proposals and reach an acceptable agreement. This could have been dealt with a lot sooner and by causing a lot less hurt and anguish to the people of this road, if Sligo County Council had treated the people a bit better. I'm reminded of the line from Aidan Dooley's The Story of Tom Crane, that young officer turns around to me in bail and says something I only heard once in twenty-seven years in the Royal Navy. A British officer say, I made a mistake. We made a mistake, a Sligo County Council in communications. So therefore, I think it's vital that this meeting takes place as soon as possible with the representatives of the residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, members, that amendment has been agreed, so.
Cahill, just briefly, one who seconded the original motion, I would just want to say I fully support and endorse what councillor Gilroy has said. The failure of the council to consult with the local community was certainly dreadful. The decision to close the road was greeted with dismay by local residents and the fact that, you know, they were treated as second-class citizens obviously didn't go down well with people. And I have to admit that I was taken aback when I learned that there had been no adequate consultation and that residents had no opportunity to present their case. So hopefully this forthcoming meeting might lead to a resolution of the issue.
Okay, thank you, members, can I move along? Sorry, C E.
Emir, do you want, do you want to say anything first or I can just say something?
Is your microphone on, Emir?
Yeah, my microphone is on there, thank you. I suppose I'll just, just say that the decision to close the road was made to eliminate a road safety hazard on the N fifteen, which followed recommendations from national road safety experts. And this decision has been made and the decision will not be revisited. And I fully acknowledge that the residents should have been informed of the decision at an earlier stage, but it was a decision made purely on a road safety basis, which is in our remit. Thank you.
Thank you. C E.
Cahill, look, just, I take the points, myself and councillor Gilroy go back a long way and I know what he's articulating. Can I just say, there's about four items on the agenda this, this morning that relate to roads in general. First was the adoption of a fifty-seven million roadworks programme, which is a reserve function. The members, it's a members programme and they decided and then the executive worked with them to draft it and then we implemented. We had a nose of motion that councillor Maloney withdrew, but it was in relation to the N four and the elimination of a right of way and in the response from the executives, there's reference to safety hazard in that. We have a nose of motion, joint nose of motion from councillor Healy and councillor Gilroy in relation to a road in Ross's Point and the nose of motion makes reference to public safety. We have a response to this nose of motion that makes reference again to the whole question of road safety. So I think what's clear is that both the executive and both the, the members have huge regard for road safety, absolutely crucial in anything we do, whether it's in delivering a fifty-seven million euro programme or whether it's, you know, a day-to-day works in terms of our roads. I want to be very clear here, we got the communication wrong on this, absolutely, and we hold our hands up 100%. We should have communicated this better and I'm not going to make excuses for not communicating well, but I would just, just remind the members, we've delivered a two-point-eight million, three-point-six kilometre scheme within level five restrictions for COVID. And, you know, we had to engage with, with the, with the T I I, we had to engage with our own department to ensure that that is a critical piece of infrastructure was delivered. And I think it's unfortunate and I know from my conversation with councillor Gilroy, it's recognised that it's been fantastic work done on the scheme, three-point-six kilometres, two-point-eight million euro, excellent work done, but this intervention and the way it's been communicated has taken away, if you like, from that. And often, often people don't agree with a decision that's made, but sometimes it's how it's communicated is the absolutely critical thing and we did not communicate this well and we hold our hands up and I apologise on behalf of the council for that not having been done the way it should have been done. That's just unfortunate what happens. The reality is, sometimes we as an executive have to make decisions for the greater good and in this case, we have to think about the 12,000 vehicles that travel along the N fifteen every day and we make a decision based on, you know, reports we get and experts we engage and so on. So I just want to be very clear and the senior engineer has said it already, the decision has been made, it's been made because within the legislation that's there, we can make this particular decision. Where we really fell down on was communicating that. And if there is, certainly it has been indicated, we will facilitate the members of the area committee and representatives of the residents to try and explain the reasons for that, why we did it, what it should bring and so on. But we do accept we should have done a lot, an awful lot better in terms of communications on this, Cahill, but we're happy to facilitate the request for a meeting. Thank you, Cahill.
Thank you, thank you, members. Councillor Gilroy and councillor Walts, can I ask you, it's half eleven, can we?
Okay, look, I, I just want to acknowledge, it is a fantastic programme, congratulate everybody involved with that. I'm, I'm, I'm still convinced in my own mind that, that a decision, one of the hundreds of decisions that had to be made in that road, I'm convinced that one of them does not add to safety and I think people who are not on the ground don't understand that. And you're going to have tractors now travelling 1.2 kilometres up and down that road with, with bales and things like that. There was one of the men outside this morning who said, he's going to come out the Barnagiarig Road and he's going to park his Jeep and take his buckets of nuts across, walk through the passageway. So you're now going to have vehicles parked on the edge of the N fifteen at that point. That something doesn't allow cars to turn right but allows cyclists to turn right, that's not safe for cyclists, it hasn't been thought through and we'll trash this out of the other one, but we'll go into the detail.
I'm going to ask you now, and I respect everything that has been said, I think the C E has clearly outlined that a mistake was made in communication. What more can we do? And he has sincerely said that he will meet whoever it needs to be met. And I fear dues to councillor Gilroy and councillor Walts for their concerns, but I do think we could stay here now pulling at this for the next 10 minutes. An apology has been given. That doesn't often happen when we all can put up our hands and say, we didn't do it as well as we should have. So I would say, move on and get that meeting going and, and take it from there and well done to the councillors that are in wholeheartedly represented, but I think we have to move.
Thanks, thanks. Councillor Castle, you've indicated, is it okay if I move on because we're at half eleven and I want to get the motions finished? Is that okay? We have the, is that okay?
Yeah, but I, I would like to speak on this entire project, if it's on the agenda for next month's meeting. I, I think there's still very important issues that have to be raised for this and I want to speak on this at the next meeting.
Okay.
I think it's important that everybody gets an opportunity to speak on this particular item on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, thank you and thanks to everybody that spoke on that motion. Now, as I said, it's after half eleven, motion thirty-one, councillor Gibbons, can we ask people to be brief, councillor Healy? Thank you.
Cahill, the community voluntary services, the length and breadth of this country are overwhelmed with the increase in adults and children seeking mental health care. And Sligo unfortunately has not escaped the situation. The reality is COVID-19 has pushed what was a mental health crisis to an emergency. The pressure on mental health services are set against years of under investment and the draconian waiting list for mental health services within the public services. We have seen an increase in depression, isolation, loneliness, anxiety. And this amounts itself, it'll push for a tsunami in mental health within the country. Community voluntary mental health and frontline services sounded the alarm months ago on the impact of the pandemic it's having on mental health and that is a meaningful and serious intervention is needed by the government to provide the care urgently needed. Government funding on mental health is at, as is always being woefully underfunded when compared to European countries. It is clear that the additional 10 million allocated to the area of mental health in the government COVID-19 resilience and recovery 2021 plan falls short of what is needed while the HSE services for 2021 commit to partially increase in counselling hours that will not even scratch the surface of the unmet needs. This is why we need emergency investment in mental health, those in the crisis cannot wait. Now more than ever, we need immediate support and services to weather this storm. And this is something that I was even on about earlier on in relation to the different services and I don't want to drag this out too much, but the one thing and I would say, I'm asking ye around here, that is of the government parties. The likes of these issues, domestic violence, mental health, all services need funding and it needs urgent funding. There's no sense in just recognising and say, there's a problem, we have a problem out there. Right, Rosie? Sorry. There's no sense in them saying, we have a problem, and just recognise that it's a problem. Unless the funding goes into these services, it's useless. That is the reality. And the damage that it's going to create long term, it's going to be a huge price to the people that depends on these services. I'd ask you all to support the motion. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, councillor Healy.
Just on that, look, it's not, the lack of funding that's been put into it, it's not just because of Covid. It's before even Covid even came in, there was a lack of funding going into mental health. It's a serious issue. The most vulnerable people in our society has been left behind. And it's important that the government stands in there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Boyd.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be quick. We do hear that there's a lot of funding going into mental health services, but the problem is it's not going into workers. We need workers on the ground. We need mental health workers in every community, not just one or two people sitting behind desks getting big monies. We see CEOs of all these voluntary places getting up to 300,000 and 400,000 a year, which is completely wrong. So I fully support the motion.
Thank you, members. Moving on.
Cahill, look, can I just come in here and my apologies. I would fully support that motion on mental health, and it has always been the orphan of mental health services. But I think in a positive way, we in Sligo have to look at the wonderful unit that has been opened at Sligo University Hospital, which is a 25-bedded psychiatric services unit. So we have to be positive. We have got funding, much needed, long waited for. But I do support your motion that it needs ongoing funding. But the positive side, I don't know if many of you have visited, an absolutely superb, top-class unit.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Grady. And I'd agree, you have visited and seen it's a state-of-the-art facility. But we also need whatever more funding can be got. Certainly you will be welcome. Councillor Maguire.
Thank you. As someone who works in this area on a daily basis, I want to support the motion. But I think the points raised by councillor Grady are very well made. The new unit in Sligo is a fantastic facility. It has been long awaited. And I know firsthand from patients there how much they appreciate it. And it has actually reduced the number of restraints that have had to be used, which I think speaks for itself. The people are so much more comfortable and happy in that environment. So while I agree entirely that we will always need more funding in relation to mental health services, and unfortunately, I believe this pandemic has exacerbated the need for mental health services in the country. It is important, as councillor Grady has said, to acknowledge the great work that has been done locally and how appreciative we are of the new facility that's just come on hand. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Moving on to motion number 32, and I'm taking that in joint with number 45. Councillor Fox, councillor Taylor and Baker. Councillor Fox.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I'll be brief and councillor Maguire. Just to thank the audience who came forward, it's not about the temporary needs of COVID or Covid. It's about the development of permanent public dining spaces in our city. Towns and villages throughout the county. So we need to establish collaborations between commerce and communities to create vibrant and safe places for everyone to enjoy. And I propose that this council would provide for this in the county development plan as it would be a wonderful addition to the quality of life to us all here in Sligo, as being an ideal setting in which to live, invest or visit.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor and Baker. Do you have, I'm taking your motion with that as well, is that okay?
Yes, Cahill, thank you. Cahill, or councillor Baker, do you want to speak first?
You go ahead first.
We put this motion together really, I suppose, with, we're talking about mental health and we've had a number of discussions on mental health this morning, this evening. We put this motion forward with that in mind, you know, with the health of people. We have seen the construction sector reopening this morning, and that's a major boost to, I suppose, people and families all over the country. And I think that, you know, if we could work maybe to open this hospitality sector or maybe allowing the hair and beauty sector to reopen a little quicker. I know we've been told that there may be talks about it in May or June. I think research has shown that there hasn't been a high number of cases throughout this sector when it was open before, during this pandemic. I think it's very, very important for, I suppose, the economy, but more so for the mental health of the people in our counties, in our towns and villages and even throughout the country. That this is taken very, very seriously and that we do everything we can to speed up the reopening of this sector.
Thank you. Councillor Baker, do you wish to speak?
I respect everything with the health guidelines and that. But I think above all, women is the people that have suffered most within this pandemic. And I've been dealing with it through my own business every day in the week. And I think if they were able to be shown a bit of light at the end of the tunnel, because I know it hasn't shown to be a high thing of Covid in the past. And plus the fact, most of the hairdressers that have the same customers and that. And even if just going and get your haircut and just get a blow drive to give them such relief, because they're trying to homeschool, look after everything. And I think to give them a bit of light at the end of the tunnel, that's all I have to say. And I think that's my thinking behind it. And I wouldn't be forcing every hairdresser into it, ones that feel comfortable. Because like every other thing, if you keep the space and you have people in a relatively quick pace, if you get minor things done at the start, I just think that we need to take strongly about. And where there would be some hairdresser with an underlying condition, and I know from our own services with GP, if there is people that is slightly vulnerable and they ring up and there is a vaccine, they are entitled to get it. So, thank you.
Thank you, members. Moving on. So now councillor Clark, motion number 33, second. Councillor Boyle, thank you. Councillor Clark.
Yeah, thanks, Cahill. Look, just, I'll be very brief. Most of you have read the story of Zoe Lally, which was a walker dog. She seen and observed three young men walking or standing on the end of a pier and huge waves banging up them, came in and swept the three lads into the sea. And her quick thinking and her ability and knowledge of the sea. She was able to pull two out and jump in after one and go to bring her down the coast and come in where it was safer. An extraordinary act of bravery. And instead of having three funerals, we have to celebrate. And Zoe Lally done for the community of Easty and they're very appreciative. And with her, chairman, I know that you haven't been in a position to offer a civic reception in your time because of Covid. And maybe it will be dealt with to the chairman's awards at some stage when the restrictions ease. I'd like to thank members for the support. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Certainly we will. Councillor Gino Boyle, second it.
No, just to support the motion.
I certainly think agree, councillor Gilroy.
Yeah, again, to support the motion, but the importance that there was actually rings there. And reading the excellent article in The Champion about it, the importance that the safety rings were there in Easty. Obviously, there's a big issue with vandalism to them and there's a lot of work has to be done to try and maintain them. But I know that some places they're taken away in the winter months. I think maybe we need to revisit that and think about it again because we need to think about the safety of the open water swimmers and things like that. Because it's getting more and more popular. In fact, we could have had four funerals if it wasn't for the rings. She would not have been able to save them and may have lost her own life. So it's even more important in that regard.
Lovely. Thank you. Councillor Maguire.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just want to wholeheartedly support this motion. We are incredibly lucky and obviously those young men are amazingly lucky to have just had the luck that Zoe was there on hand, has her training and her capacity and bravery, which cannot be understated, to jump in and rescue people like that takes a huge degree of bravery. But I agree with the comments in relation to the Ring Boys. Unfortunately, accidents don't just happen during the summer season and we need to ensure that they're available at all times. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I think in agreement, we'll be full support in the chamber. And, you know, with Covid restrictions, we'd love to be able to offer a civic reception. But just on a note myself, I sent a card to Zoe on my own behalf, on behalf of the council and all the members, thanking her for her bravery. And I think it was a great gesture. And it's certainly something we can address again. Motion number 34, councillor Bree, second. Councillor Fox.
Cahill, look, I welcome the fact that 100,000 euro has been provided to advance this project. However, I'm concerned and confused note that the funding is to be used to advance the business case for the project. What in the name of goodness is the business case for the project? With all the announcements, pronouncements and statements issued in recent months by ministers, ministers of states and TDs, people in this community were of the view that we would at least be provided with an indication as to when construction work would commence on this long-awaited project. The necessity for the provision of the pedestrian footbridge adjacent to Markovich Bridge, linking Bridge Street and Thomas Street, has been discussed and considered at meetings after meeting, after year after year. Residents of the eastward side of the town particularly lobbied for the provision of the bridge. And I was looking at my files last week and I noted that it was back in 2007 when the initial grant was provided to commence this project. And following the procurement process at the time, consultants Ron and O'Donovan were appointed to prepare plans and documentation to allow the planning process to commence. And here we are today, Cahill, 14 years later. And the latest report we have received refers to funding to advance the business case for the project. And we're told that the proposal shall be developed in light of the overall proposed local transport plan for Sligo and in the context of the public realm strategy for Sligo City. Cahill, look, for how much longer must we wait to see this project proceed? Is it any wonder that some people become cynical when they continue to hear announcements but see little progress? Surely at this stage, after 14 years, with all the promises about funding, somebody somewhere should be in a position to provide us with some type of timescale as to when construction work is expected to commence on this footbridge?
Thank you, councillor Fox.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I agree wholeheartedly with what councillor Bree has said about this bridge. I trained close by, I worked close by, should I say. And it's an accident waiting to happen there because it's a true road. And it's in the interest of everybody in Sligotown that this project is moved forward immediately.
Councillor Gibbons.
Cahill, look, I'd like to support the motion. Realistically, and we're talking there about 2007 when funding came available, this issue was raised for years upon years back at the old corporation. I remember even myself, and there was different councillors, including councillor Bree, had raised it in my time on the corporation. And I do know that councillor Bree had brought it up long before that. The issue there, and councillor Grady there behind can verify all of this. At that time, there was lots of promises made in relation to it. They even tried to tie it in with the new bridge that was going across the Garabog. And was at that time, it was nearly like a lever point to try and sway the people of the Dooley Park area into accepting that whole reconstruction in that area. But the one thing about that, at that time, we were given excuse after excuse. We were told that the bridge was a protected structure and they couldn't put a parapet bridge anywhere near it. They couldn't adjoin it to it. And you know something realistically? 100,000 should be well able to put in a parapet bridge along there by bolting it and putting a few props down into the river and bolted to the bridge. The same as what they're doing. It's all right, people laugh. They've done it in Carrick and Shannon. I can't understand why we can't do it in Sligo. We've raised issues if our footpaths had to go in, in dangerous roads around the town and everything else where there was no footpath. They were put into place. There's a place to scream and out for a footpath. We had a special needs facility over there over the years. And they had to try and navigate across the bridge there against traffic, navigated with the traffic that was there in order to get to the other side. Instead of a footpath being put in place, I'll tell you this much, it should be, just something that the initiative should be just taken by the engineer department here and say, right, you know what? Let's move with this. The whole thing, put a few props into the water, bolt the bloody old thing to the existing bridge that's there. It's not rocket science and not an engineer, but that's the way that looks to me. And lots of people has came with the same idea over the years.
Thank you.
It's been done in Carrick. I can't see why it can't be done in Sligo.
Councillor Sinead Maguire, and we'll finish on this. Sinead, you have your hand up.
Sorry, thank you. Yes, thank you, Cahill. Look, I'll be brief, just to support the motion. I think all the points been raised already. Thank you.
Lovely, thank you. Motion number 35.
Cahill, can I just go back in? I'll walk backwards. Councillor Gibbons, the bridge in Carrick and Shannon is not a protected structure. Markovich Bridge is a protected structure. So that has a huge impact on how you proceed in relation to any works on it. Just councillor Bree's queries in relation to timelines and so on. I think the business case is a bit of a, I'm not sure if it describes as well because for me, the business case in relation to this scheme is public safety again. And it's part of the steps that have to be gone through a business case to get the scheme approved for our funding and so on. What we'll do is we'll come back to you with a more, an indicative timeline in relation to how we proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Bree. Motion 35, councillor Bree, second.
Cahill, look, I note that the cost of cleanups for illegal dumping reduced significantly in 2020. And I assume this reflects a reduction in such dumping. The increased level of public awareness, in addition to the work of so many volunteers and community groups and tidy towns committees, is obviously of significant benefit in reducing such dumping. Although I have a feeling that the restrictions imposed as a result of the Covid-19 pandemic might also have helped to reduce the level of illegal dumping in 2020. I appreciate that it's a difficult issue to deal with, particularly in that much of the dumping appears to occur under cover of darkness. Local community groups and tidy towns organisations are to be commended on their efforts to address the problem. Increased charges in recent years for the disposal of household refuse certainly haven't been helpful. Unauthorized dumping and fly tipping has significant implications for the environment and for tourism development, in addition to cost implications for this council in terms of having sites cleaned up and waste material removed. I welcome the fact, Cahill, that work is progressing on the new litter management plan, particularly with regard to providing the council with a strategy to combat the illegal dumping in the years ahead. Thank you, Cahill.
Thank you, councillor Gilroy.
Again, to support it, I lack councillor Bree's confidence that last year was due to less dumping. I'm afraid, I think it was a lot more dumping last year, but we just haven't been able to deal with it as efficiently as in previous years. There's a big problem. An awful lot of work has been done over the last weekend. In Grange, there was a big cleanup done and well done to all involved. Cliffane has one coming up. Carrero, we're doing it on Friday. All over the county it's been done. And well done to all the volunteers that's doing that. I'm going to harp back now to my other issue that was earlier on. I found five of the aerosol cans that's used for spraying marking on the roads thrown into the ditch by contractors working for Sligo County Council. We cannot allow that to go on. We cannot allow that. If they're working for us, they follow our rules, full stop.
Thank you, councillor Healy.
Just want to support the motion. And I also want to thank the two full-time litter wardens for the great work they're doing and the help and support that they're giving the community. The tidy towns and in all the different towns and villages have done great work down through the years and they continue to do it. But it's a problem that's out there that, I don't know, unless we start hitting them well in the pocket, I don't think we're ever going to solve this issue. In relation to the, what you're at progress, at the moment, you're coming up with a proposal on the future of the litter management plan. Is there any chance you might tie in with the tidy towns on that as well and give them some sort of an input into it? I think that'd be important as we move on forward, that they're tied in with. Because at the end of the day, it's the communities that we depend on to keep our towns and village. And as well as that, they might have a voice on it, and I think that might be an important step for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think councillor Castleley.
Yes, I would just also like to acknowledge the volunteers who have done great work over, not only last weekend, but over the month and over the years in relation to keeping our towns and villages and beaches in particular clean. And I'd also like to acknowledge the cooperation that is between the council staff and volunteers and voluntary groups on the ground because both work hand in hand together. It's not for that, it's not a they and us where, you know, we both, all groups support each other. We support the local authority and the local authorities support the voluntary groups on the ground. And generally, it works. The fly tipping, that is an issue. And that's, you know, it speaks about particular individuals and the attitude they have towards their own countryside and their own country. But in general, I have to say that people are very, very good at volunteering, at helping out. And that's done in conjunction with the cooperation of the local authorities and resources that are given to us. So I'd just like to acknowledge everybody involved in helping to keep our county clean and litter free. Thank you.
Thank you. Emir, can you come in, please?
Yeah, Cahill, look, thank you. I just want to clarify quickly. The figures that were distributed-
were distributed included street sweeping, and that's why two thousand and twenty showed a reduction. So, in fact, I will circulate the figures without the street sweeping, just to show that in fact, the figures, the amount for cleanups have increased year on year, and so two thousand and nineteen was higher than two thousand and eighteen, and two thousand and twenty was higher than two thousand and nineteen, taking out the street sweeping. Just to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, members. Motion thirty-six, councillor Bray, can I have a second or?
Caoheirlech, it's almost three years since the recreation park at the Fair Green was closed due to it being damaged by vandals. The first phase of the development was opened in two thousand and seventeen and included the provision of an all-weather multi-use games area suited for both soccer and basketball. The second phase of the development was dependent on funding being made available under the Sports Capital Programme. However, I am aware that applications made at the time by the council weren't successful. I welcome the report from the Director of Services, and I note that any reopening of the Fair Green Park will take place in consultation with the local community. The installation of lighting and CCTV is certainly required, and I'm pleased to note that a modest budget has been set aside for the park in the current year. Hopefully, a successful consultative process will see a new application for grant dates submitted so as to allow for the second phase of the development to proceed. Thank you, Caoheirlech.
Thank you, councillor Boy.
Just to support the motion.
Lovely, thanks. Members, move on. So, motion thirty-seven, councillor Queenan. You're on mute, councillor Queenan. Councillor Taylor?
No, we're on mute here, Caoheirlech. We're on mute, we're quiet.
I second that, Chair.
Thank you.
Can you deal with that, Caoheirlech, at future meetings?
Yeah, is it, is it okay if we bring that forward to the CPG meeting?
No problem.
Okay, that's grand, thank you.
Next motion I defer, because it could be a change of government by the time next meeting, one, then my, the whole policy could change. So I defer that motion to the next meeting, Caoheirlech, to help you out.
Thank you. Motion number thirty-nine, councillor O'Grady, can I get a second or?
Yeah, I put this motion down, that Sligo County Council would write to Minister Peter Burke, supporting and commending him for setting up a working group to examine the provision of maternity leave for county and city councillors, and I can't, no one can say I'm putting it down for a selfish reason, but I'm putting it down, that there would be maternity leave granted for councillors, both city and county. Minister Burke held his first meeting on the twenty ninth of March, and he had six women cross-party, and he hosted the meeting. Six young mothers, who was able to tell him at firsthand the difficulties that they experienced, and it's an ongoing issue both locally and nationally. We have all seen Helen McEntee, Minister, the steps that she had to go to and that her colleagues had to go to in order that she could take her maternity leave. So, I feel it must be, it's a problem that must be addressed, and it will enable much better female participation in local and national government. So I'm asking my colleagues that they'll wholeheartedly support this motion, and I ask that the Sligo County Council will write to the minister, commending him on hosting and setting up a working group to look at this whole very important issue for women.
Thank you, councillor Boy.
Thank you, Chair, I'll support that.
Lovely. Thank you. Councillor Sinead McGuire?
I would absolutely wholeheartedly support this motion also, and something I've been lobbying Minister McEntee on since it first became mooted. As you'll all be aware, I think I'm the only councillor from Sligo County Council ever to be elected when pregnant, and despite how difficult it was, I never missed a meeting. But it was incredibly difficult, and I think councillor O'Grady's point in relation to encouraging young women in, this is absolutely vital, because I wouldn't encourage anybody to go through what I did at the time. And if we really are serious about having representation from all sectors of the society and encouraging women in to politics, I think this is a very basic first step.
Thank you. Moving on to motion number forty, councillor O'Grady, can I have a second or?
I received the report on Kaislin, and there's some bit of confusion, or certainly on my behalf. I always understood, when we were, Borough Council was in place, that after Kaislin closed, that the property became, into the ownership of Sligo Borough Council at that time. Now, I suppose several people have come to me as they went to other councillors. It's more obvious now because we have a supermarket in behind it, and people are passing it daily. And it's a huge building, that a lot of central government funding was spent, to put it where it is today. So I would like to think that we would move on. There's many needs for people for social housing, for many aspects of housing, and that this building wouldn't be left much longer. I think two thousand and eight is the year that Kaislin closed down, and it's a long time, and it's a huge piece of property in a very, you know, its proximity to all the services is very good. So I do think if we have any ownership on it, which I'm confused about, that we certainly engage with somebody to move it on, and I'm sure that will be done.
Thank you, councillor Gibbons.
Caoheirlech, I support the motion, and I understand even the history of it. I was on the Borough Council when all of this actually came into place with Kaislin, and I do remember it was at the time, it was through the Department of Justice, and actually owned that building, and it's moved on to this, rose itself, was to come back into the ownership of the council. Now, my predecessor, Chris McManus, and I do know he had worked with DIVs in relation to it, to try and get that building, he was looking to get it reused as a resort for women, for victims of domestic violence at the time. But I do support the motion, and could I ask, in relation to this, and it mightn't be a bad idea, that if clarification in the form of a report come on front of this next, on the front of the next council meeting, in relation to that Kaislin building, because we do need clarification, and we do need something on paper to show that it's either lost to this council or where it is, but I would ask that it's put on the agenda for the next, the report be brought forward for the next meeting. That's all, if it's all okay with the proposal of the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Sinead McGuire?
Yeah, I just want to support that motion. It's a building that has huge potential, and has been outlined as in a very strategic part of the town, and there are numerous groups and individuals who are in need of assistance, and I think that it's a shame that we would let this building fall into a state where it couldn't be used. So I wholeheartedly support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tom Fox.
Support the motion. I tabled the motion some time back on this, and it's a building that should be utilised in the town centre. There is a demand, you know, we need it badly for people and families as we emerge from the pandemic.
Thank you. Councillor Bray?
Caoheirlech, I support the motion, obviously, and I think we do need a more comprehensive response, because I certainly recollect in this chamber, a report being provided by the Director of Service in the last number of years on this particular building, and we were told at the time that there were some initial discussions or negotiations going on with the DIVs group that were looking, or seeking to use it for victims of domestic violence, and I'm surprised that there doesn't appear to have been much progress in the intervening period. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Members, it's not, sorry.
Joe Murphy just threw the chair there in response, if that's okay.
Yes, Joe.
My report says that there is currently ongoing discussions with an approved housing body in relation to the future use of that building. The building is still in the ownership of Finiscan Housing Association, although they have asked us to take ownership of it, and that's an ongoing process at the moment, but we have held back on actually taking ownership of that because we want to try and get an approved way forward for dealing with that building. But the reality is that, I suppose, the effective ownership, while this remains with Finiscan Housing Association, that building will end up in our ownership. So I think maybe when I have something to report with regard to our ongoing discussions with both the department and that housing approved body, I'll come back to the members with an update, if that's okay with the members.
Lovely, thank you, that's okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Murphy, for that report and for clarifying, which you did in your report, clarify that the ownership was still in Finiscan Housing Association. But I would welcome, as other members, that hopefully we be able to move on, and I understand that it is a slow process, all of those things, it just doesn't happen, but I appreciate that you're working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, members, it's twelve o'clock, but in consultation with the Covid officer, you've agreed to extend it for ten minutes to complete the agenda. We have a municipal meeting this day a week, so if you can agree and keep it very brief, we'll get the agenda finished. Is that okay? Thank you. Councillor O'Grady, forty-one.
I'm sure like other councillors, you get a lot, we get a lot of people coming about the issue of medical cards and the problems, especially people who have had a diagnosis of cancer. I find it incredibly difficult to deal with some of those people, and I know that there has been ongoing assessment of the criteria for delivery of medical cards to people. But I had a person on two or three weeks ago, diagnosis of cancer, refused a medical card, needs ongoing treatment, and certainly wouldn't be able to afford the treatment. And it was a real, to undergo the treatment the person had to undergo, and to also have the financial hardship to bear. I think it's important that cancer patients are given temporary cards. Now, I know they can apply if somebody is terminal, if you can, if your consultant can indicate that you're terminal and that your lifespan would be twenty-four months, and not more than twenty-four months, a card can be provided to you. Well, I don't think that's the pathway we should go now. More and more people are living with cancers, but it is expensive, and any illness is expensive. A visit to the doctor can put you back fifty or sixty euros, and the person I was speaking to two, three weeks ago, they had three visits in one month. That's a lot of money. So I'm requesting that we write to the Minister for Health, requesting that he would look again at the income threshold and look again at the needs of people who have had a cancer diagnosis, and grant them all, certainly people who have been, who have had a diagnosis of cancer, that they would get a temporary card until their treatment would be finished.
Thank you, councillor Maloney.
Yeah, and seconding the motion, I think I'm speaking probably for every councillor here. I think it's an excellent motion, and all of us is getting representation from people with cancer and other serious illnesses that have been refused for medical care, and I think it's a situation that needs to be looked at and needs to be addressed.
Thank you. All agreed. Motion forty-three, councillor Taylor, and I'll second that myself.
Caoheirlech, I'm willing to defer that to the municipal meeting next week.
Okay, that's agreed. Thank you. If we can keep it brief, we'll get through the last few. Councillor Taylor, number?
And I'm willing to defer forty-four to the same meeting.
Thank you, very good.
They're local issues, thank you.
Comfort with you. Forty-five, councillor Taylor, and, oh, sorry, sorry, done, great, thank you. Forty-six is done. Forty-seven, councillor Maloney, thank you, deferred. Forty-eight, councillor Gilroy.
Defer to next month.
Thank you. Councillor Gibbons, we're nearly there.
I'll be very quick in relation to this. What they bring up, reality to it, it doesn't matter which of it is, we own a car, we have to bring it first to the NCT Centre up beyond Drummies Gull. Now, it's a disgrace what's going on there at the moment. Since the Covid came in, this over the last twelve months, while the testing is going on out there, it doesn't matter if you're an elderly person, person with disabilities, or an ordinary five-eight, or whatever else, young mother with children, you cannot sit in that car while it's being tested. But they're not providing any facilities for shelter. Now, the company that owns it, has run of this, they're Appalus, right, they're a company, they're a Spanish company, and they're, look, they've made in relation to this from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and nineteen, they made seventy-nine million, that was one point five million a week of the turnover, and their shareholders from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and nineteen got thirty-one million, or thirty-one point three million in dividends paid out to them. And yet this same company does forty-eight centres across Ireland thinks that it's acceptable not to provide shelter under this whole Covid end of it, is an absolute disgrace. It should be, they should be made provide the shelter. They should be made provide the provisions within that shelter for people. They have a centre out there which, at the best of times, was only able to hold about six or seven people. They're not able to do that anymore. That shelter that they have there at the moment, that was provided originally, is only being used at the moment was to take people's money off them when they go in, and that seems to be the only interest. This is no indictment on the staff that works for them. They have an excellent staff, and I'm not knocking the staff, but this company needs to pull, be pulled to task in relation, they have to provide shelter. It's unacceptable that people goes out there, it's mandatory that they have to go out there with their car. They can't sit in their car and stand out in all types of weather. Now, they might have fantastic weather that can do that in Spain, but unfortunately, our inclement weather that we have in this country, I mean to say, I've something that, Jerry, there, we only had snow the other evening in Ballymoat, and that's the reality at this time of the year. So, look, at the end of the day, somebody needs to do something, and the pressure needs to be put on this company.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Healy.
The minister needs to step in here. As my colleague says, they're across the county, across the country, all these centres. Next door to them, Colin Burns, he does testing of vehicles as well, and he provides an area where you can win and sit in, and it's disappointing to think, I mean, that this company just next door to it aren't providing the service. As well as that, it's the situation where up ninety percent of them, NCT centres are. They're not in a town, they're way out, in areas where you can't go into a shop, or you can't go into anywhere else. You have to go there with your vehicle, and you have to stay with your vehicle. So I think we, from the council here, we want to be writing to them and ask them that they provide this service as well. Thank you.
That's agreed. Thank you. Motion number fifty, councillor Walsh, defer to next month. Thank you. Motion fifty-one, last one, councillor Fox, can I have a second or? You take a second or? Councillor Gilroy put up a hand for, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, just to follow up on, thanks to Dorothy for a detailed report. I know we're late for this current round of funding, but is there a plan in place for us to make applications in the future? We have a hundred and ninety kilometres of coastal line here in County Sligo, and the nautical sector offers a huge opportunity for marine tourism, so hopefully we can focus more on it and avail the funds that are available there on the caption.
Lovely, thank you, councillor Gilroy.
Yeah, fully support the motion, like to see us included and tied as well.
Okay, thanks, members. I have a number of votes of sympathy sent up here.
Caoheirlech, sorry.
Sorry, yeah.
Just before you continue, I did indicate to you that I would like to deal with just one motion, and then I'd defer the other two.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I didn't see you, councillor Charlie. Thank you, yeah. Which number? Using.
Yeah, just in relation to Rattin Carrick.
Yeah, we have a second or councillor O'Grady, yeah.
I just would like to thank executive Dorothy for the report, and also I would like to acknowledge Michael Carty, engineer. I had a very positive discussion with Michael, and while the lands are owned and managed by Queach, I understand that there will be funding sought to provide necessary resurfacing work. I understand, and I got a lot of reps from a lot of people in the area and trying to use what Carrick would, it's very popular at the age, or one of the most popular wats, probably in the county, the fleet named Trail. So I'm delighted that there will be progress, as we acknowledge Dorothy and Michael Carty from the council, and we look forward to the work to be done in a timely fashion.
Thank you, and thanks, second. Yeah, yeah, yeah. The other two motions will be deferred to the municipal, if that's okay. So, members, just, and I have a vote of congratulations, I'll be very brief. Congratulations, good wishes to Mona McSharry of Grange County, Sligo, to wish morning all the best, of very good luck in the Irish Olympic swimming trials, April twentieth to twenty-fourth, and as she becomes Sligo's first Olympian. So councillor Gilroy and councillor O'Grady, so I think we'll all concord with that. Thanks, members, for your cooperation. It's great to conclude the full meeting in one, and we look forward to doing the next meeting as speedy as well. Thanks, and everyone have a good day.
Well done.